All right, good evening everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started so that we can make sure we get to the school board for the state commission. Good evening everyone, my name is Guy Walker. I'm the 2017 chairman of the board for the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for joining us for the candidate forum. Tonight we'll be featuring candidates for both Salina City Commissioning and USD 305 School Board. Tonight's event is sponsored by the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce and the Salina League Women Voters. And I'd also like to extend a big thank you to Dr. Matt Thompson and the entire staff at Kansas Wesleyan for hosting us this evening. The Chamber League Women Voters have made available printed profiles on all of the candidates. These are available in the back of the room, at the Chamber office, on the Chamber's website at www.salinakansas.org, on the LEAP's website at www.lwe-salina.org. That's a tough one to say. The County Clerk's Office and the Salina Public Library. First session tonight will feature candidates for USD 305. I'll start by introducing them. We have Mark Mandred, Gary Dinning, Emma Doherty, Jim Fletcher, Gabe Grant, Ed Geisler, Ramona Newsom, and Karen Metner Underwood. And I'd also like to introduce Margaret Wyatt, Salina League Women Voters, so she's gonna review the rules and the format.
Okay, here are the rules and the format. All candidate answers and remarks will be one minute long. There are timers sitting there on the left in the center of the auditorium. You will get a green when your one minute starts. You will get a yellow when you've spoken for forty seconds. You will get a red when you've spoken for a minute and the timer will say stop. We will begin with the one minute opening remarks from the candidates. The candidates will rotate when they give remarks or answers. So Mark will start with his opening remark when I tell you. And then Gary will give the first question and it'll go on like that. After the opening remarks from each candidate, we'll have questions from the media panel, just see it here, until about 6:40. Guy will moderate those questions. There are pads and pencils on the chairs. During the questions from the media panel, if you have questions you would like to ask the candidates, write them down on one of those pads. Hold your hand up and someone will come and collect them. There will be screeners that will look at the questions and give them to me to ask after the media panel asks their questions. And then Guy will moderate the candidates' one minute closing remarks. And that is the format and the rules. Any questions? Okay, now we'll start with Mark with his one minute opening remark.
Good evening everyone, fellow Salinas. I'm qualified as a candidate for our school board because I believe in the future of this community and the critically important role our schools play in the development of the young people who will become our leaders, workers, and public officials. It's important for each of us to return our skills and gifts to the community and the school board is a place well-suited for me to be an effective contributor. I've spent over twenty-eight years working for colleges and universities, hold a master's degree in management, and a doctorate in educational leadership. The many things I've learned in these experiences leave me prepared and qualified to serve on this important board. In USD 305, we have excellent teachers and administrators. As a member of the school board, I want to work collaboratively with all of these fine people to make the best decisions about the next superintendent, our budget, and ways the Salina community can do engagements for the schools. The Public Safety Partnership recently signed with Salina Tech is a tremendous example of community engagement and I'm excited to see if we can create similar opportunities in other career paths.
Gary.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Gary Dinning. I'm a product of the Salina and Manhattan and Lawrence, Kansas public schools. I've lived in Kansas all my life. I went to then Public University, went to NYU for undergraduate and law school. My children went to metal art at Roosevelt Lincoln and graduated from Central. And my son then went to Public University in Kansas City, Johnson County, and a technical degree. My daughter went to Public University, got a master's degree in art history from the University of Oregon. My career has been family and children-centered. My involvement in the community even other than the school board has been very family and children-centered, reporting to places like Ashley House and Parks for Recreation. I'd like to continue the work I've been doing for Salina and Salinas youth on your school board for two years.
Hi, I'm Emma Doherty, candidate for the USD 305 School District. Recently, a teacher told me that each day she looks forward to going into her classroom and to teach and make a difference in her students' lives. And I thought, how wonderful! As a nurse in Salina Regional Health Center, I too enjoy going every single day and making a difference in my patients' lives. And so, as a school board candidate, I want to help each teacher and in fact, the whole entire team to have this opportunity for all of our students to have a valuable, safe, positive educational experience. And I had two children that went through the school system, I have grandchildren that need to and have to go through the school system, and it's a tremendous experience. We want to shift it from good to excellent. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Fletcher. I was born and raised right here in Salina and have lived most of my life here. I'm a graduate of Salona South High School. My experience includes working as a private sector employee, a public sector employee, and currently as a business owner. I've worked with school administrations and students in the past as a youth prevention officer for the DARE program and in many other roles. Have you ever looked into a child's eyes and wondered what their future will hold? The next few years will set the groundwork for the next chapter in USD 305. As we select a new superintendent to lead our district into the future, it's important that we bring someone with the ability to work with the board and staff to create a vision and to continue preparing our students to thrive in the future. Many people from our community have worked to build the wonderful district that we have today. By working together, we can continue to grow and adapt and provide the best education for students.
Good evening, my name is Gabe Grant. I'm a lifelong Salina and a 2009 graduate of Salina Central High School. I believe serving the community we live in is important for any citizen and I'm proud of being up here with this great group of candidates and have enjoyed the conversations I've had with members of the Salina community about the future of Salina public schools over the past couple of months. With our near-completed first-class facilities, it's time to build on the success of the 2014 bond projects in a common sense manner to give our children the best education possible and put our community on a continued path to success. Whether entering the workforce, moving on to a career, or technical training, attending a community, state, or Ivy League college or university, it's important every child have the opportunity and the support to be prepared for that next step. My priority as a school board member would be to find a permanent superintendent who shares that vision and sees teachers as partners in achieving it. Thank you for being here tonight and I look forward to our conversation.
Hello, my name is Ed Geisler. I have lived in Salina for four years. My wife and I have firstborn twins, Paula and Reagan, who go to Salina Central. We moved to Salina from Colby where I was a school board member and I was appointed to the negotiations committee. I was also a member of the Board of Control for Northwest Technical College of Dibley and I served as chairman of the Board of Natural Resource Conservation Services on this county. I have run in for school board to bring teamwork, leadership, and communication to the District 305. I feel that regardless of the issue, it takes great leadership to keep the district successful. Teamwork is required by board members and the administrators to work together to accomplish one goal: providing a great education for our students at the same time as providing a support system for our teachers. Communication is the key to functionality of any organization regardless of how busy we get from day to day. We must communicate to everyone that is involved with the district. One thing I pride myself in is that I'm friendly.
Sharon.
Good evening, I'm Ramona. And I'm proud of just sitting on the Board of Education. I'm excited to be a native of Salina. And you may might look and say, but if you want to work here, you can go to USD 305. But if you look at West Chu's definition, native is one who calls a place home. Thirteen years ago, I called Salina home. I love being here, I love the community, and I've given in several ways, I've tried to be very, very active in the community. But the pinnacle of my existence of being here has been serving on the school board. I have enjoyed what we've accomplished thus far, but there's so much more that we've got yet to do. And so, I want to be a part of those major decisions. I want to be a part of selecting the next superintendent. And Superintendent Hardy has done a great job thus far, but we need a permanent person and I want to be a part of that. So I'm looking forward to tonight and just continuing in my role as our school board.
Sharon.
Hi, I'm Karen Metner Underwood. I'm married to Benjamin. We'll be ten years in two weeks. My older two stepchildren went to South High School. Our oldest, excuse me, our youngest son is in fourth grade at Sensa. Our youngest daughter will be three on Saturday. She's getting ready for speech therapy at the co-op this next week. Our granddaughter is two and a half. I was born and raised in Salina. I'm a graduate of Central High, also a graduate of KSU. Where I participate in the student government. I'm also a member of Sensa School PTA. I've been on the PTA for four years and last two years serving as vice president. I have three goals: if elected, or increase parent involvement through communication, keep the bond improvements going to improve our schools, and educating the community on bullying through mediation, meetings, and workshops. Thank you.
Guy will now introduce and moderate the meeting. Thank you, Margaret. Okay, we have with us tonight from the media, we have Sharon Montague with Salina Journal and Todd Pinter with Rocky EDM Radio. We'll start with Sharon and make your question and the first answer will come from Gary.
What do you see as the school board's role if there's an issue between an employee or a group of employees and an ability administrator?
Well, first of all, I don't ever want the school board to be the place to deal with problems with parents and employees or even employees and building administrators. We have people, we hire professionals and ableists. That should be something the superintendent does, and ninety-nine percent of the time that's going to happen. But the way the contracts work, the way the law works, is you do, if employees have an ongoing problem with the administrator, eventually it can get to the board. And the rule, what the board has to do is they have to do fact-finding to decide, you know, what's going on, what's happening. And then they have to apply to the policies of the district, hopefully common sense knowledge of what's going on, and come to a conclusion. I don't think they can, we could, the board can take sides or anything on one side or the other. But hopefully that doesn't happen very often because we have people in place who are professionals and can handle such issues.
I feel that it's very, very important that you handle issues at the lowest level possible with the people involved. And you gather the data, the facts, and you review those at the lowest level. And then if you still have questions and concerns or you can't get the problem solved, then you move up to the next level. But it is always so excellent to have those people at the table that were involved in the issue and be able to discuss it and solve it. Now, it's real important that the board have policies and procedures that can help the leaders and help those that are involved in the situation to help solve the problems. But it's real important to handle the situations at the lowest level possible.
I think that it's important that the roles between the teachers and the administration, staff and administration is always fostered. I think the board's there to help provide guidance and leadership to those folks. But one of the things that's really nice is having some policies, procedures, and work agreements that outline how those situations would be handled. I don't know that there's a straight across the board answer for every situation. I think the key is every situation when you look at, and I think it's always important to listen, to listen and understand the best you can and then deal with each situation the way it needs to be handled.
Sorry to interrupt, Gabe. All of you might pull your microphones just a little bit closer. I understand people in the back are having a tough time hearing, so.
Hear me in the back. I'll go. I agree with what's been said. I think those issues are best handled at the building level between Doc Oles' position. I would hope to have a trusted relationship with the superintendent and the administration and they would bring us those problems when it was something that the Board of Education needed to act on, that they would have the best interest for the students in the district as they handle them there in the building or where the issues happen.
I'm a great advocate of communication. You know, if you have a great team, hopefully the teacher, the administration, and the school board can all communicate all together. You know, I guess that's the worst possible thing, to have something like that happening throughout the district. But I would say that the relationship between a teacher and a principal all the way through is very, very important so we don't ever have to face that.
There's an issue of policy. And policy is also generating the accountability for each individual function. And so, the board's responsibility is to allow those persons in authority and in those positions to handle those issues. So, again, we would allow those employees and the administration to have a conversation. And if, for whatever reason, it did have to escalate, we would hope that that would not be the case. But if that were to happen, then we would address that as we prepare it with whatever policies and protocols are in place and then move forward.
Do you believe that issues that are brought out should be made at the school level with the teachers first and then move on to the lead teachers and then the principal? If they are not able to resolve the issues, to go to the district level, if they're not able to resolve it, then bring it up to the superintendent. But you do need to stay neutral and listen to all sides so that you know everything that's going on. If you need to research it, if you need to do fact-finding, that's the best way to go.
Okay, Mark.
Thank you for the question, Sharon. In general, there's a reason for an organizational chart and I firmly believe in following that. I think it's gonna be really rare, or the type of dispute that I think your question alludes to is gonna come all the way to the school board. If it does, I very much believe in having data to inform any decision that my colleagues and I might need to look at. I want to use that data to make the best possible decision, always keeping in mind what's best for the student first and foremost. To me, we're here for the student. We all work together to do what's best for those individuals.
Thank you. Todd, you're up and will, first person to answer will be Emma.
Soon here in Salina, the USD 305 District will have some of the best facilities for our students in the state as soon as the construction projects are finished. My fear though is we're gonna have teachers for those buildings. Just today, Kansas Education Commissioner Dr. Randy Watson said that he believes we are two years away from one of the largest teacher shortages ever. He bases that on the number of juniors or lack thereof in college that are currently studying to be teachers. How can we keep the teachers we have and also at the same time attract new teachers to our district?
I'm a firm believer in starting at a young age to encourage people to be teachers. And that starts with the family unit, speaking positivity of teachers and how fun it is to be in school and what all life learned. And so, you start there because those careers are sometimes chosen at an early age. And it is very, very important that we have the teachers. Each teacher's a leader of their class and they present the opportunity for learning. And so, it's very important that we have the teachers. We have the same thing in nursing, we have nursing shortages. And you have to start at a young age and encourage people to become a nurse and speak positively of the career. That's real, real important. So, we may have to go out of state, we may have to go to universities, we may have to advertise. It will be real, real important that each classroom has a qualified teacher to teach our students.
I think that this is a struggle that not only teachers in nursing are facing, but just about every business that's out there is struggling with finding adequate help and employees in today's environment. The places that I've seen that have been very successful have been very creative with some of the tools that they've come up with. They've found ways to provide, to create environments that are inviting, where people want to be part of that organization. And it's interesting how those organizations grow organically because soon you have teachers, recruited teachers, and things like that. And I think that it's got to be something that's at the forefront. I think the school's administration is looking at that all the time and that's gotta include a partnership not only with the board, with the Human Resources Department, and the community for that matter.
First and foremost, we have to compete to recruit teachers, making sure that the environment for them in Salina is the best it can be, so that we can see teachers as partners, that our salary scale and benefits that we offer them are comparable with that across the state, across the country, that living in Salina, you could make a great career as a teacher. We want the best possible teachers to teach our students. I think there might be maybe some CTE options. I know we're finding other tracks available right now and adding those. The USD 305 administration is adding them all the time. Those have been a big thing through the bond issue. Give you an option through that to encourage students to look at that as a possible career track and encouraging them to come back to Salina and do it.
It all starts with supporting the teacher, making the teacher feel welcome into the district, making them feel at home. You know, once they feel at home within the district, they're gonna start talking, they're gonna start recruiting themselves. And I think it's, it's with the teacher, you know, helping them feel at home, talking to their students, and letting them know how good the major really is. So I think it's, I think it's talking. Thank you.
I think one of the envies of USD 305 within the state of Kansas is our LIF program. The Salina Education Foundation has a program where we draw our own teachers. And I believe that there are several districts who wish they had something that even looked vaguely like that. So we're already a step ahead of the rest of the state because we are looking at already encouraging our students to pursue a career in teaching and not just pursue that, but then come back to Salina and teach. And that's a very, very successful program. So we are already leading the path, but with that, we also still need to be continuing to grow. And as I watch the negotiation process this summer, we work well with our NEA Salina group. And so, we are able to have a good relationship.
After attending the NEA negotiations with Ramona, I learned that if we were to increase wages and benefits competitive wages, that could help bring teachers back in the, excuse me, into the area. The other thing that I'm interested on seeing is if there's a way to, people who have a bachelor's degree, if we can get those people into a teaching area or certification so that we don't have a teaching shortage anymore.
Mark.
Todd, I want to extrapolate your question now. You said two years down the road for teachers. We already have a shortage of substitute teachers, so the challenge is real already. And I think what we need to do is just be as creative as we possibly can. Salina's a great place to live, it's a great place to work, but how do we tell others about that? How do we spread that word? As others have said, how do we make sure the benefit package is as competitive as possible? But each school, in addition to being good facilities, how do we make sure it's fun, engaging, and supportive? By and large, I think it is, but how do we spread that word? How do we work with our local colleges? I work in Bethany. How do we make sure Bethany student teachers might like to stay here at Kansas Wesleyan and other places that are generating teachers? How do we be collaborative and partnering in those ways? So, matter of reaching out, matter of being engaging and trying to be creative as best we possibly can. And in that creativity, I do really think the board can help Dr. Hardy, whether he stays as a superintendent or someone else, working with Mr. Stevens, Mr. Shulman, and the other principals, I think we really can be collaborative.
Gary.
Thanks. We face a local, state, and national problem here. When our Department of Education leader in Washington is not a huge supporter of public schools, we've got a real problem attracting kids into education. And so, like others have said, we have to be very, very inventive here in Salina. Because Ms. Newsom said the Salina Education Foundation can be a big part of that in Salina. When I was president of the Education Foundation last year, we made over $1 million in our down-low LIF program. We've got five or six students in the pipeline right now. That'll help, that can solve the problem. We need to somehow encourage the people to hold teachers and understand a higher esteem. We need to do what we can in compensation, so that's another thing people have said. But I think we've also got a teaching program in our high schools that'll help. Anything we can do to be innovative, anything we can do to increase the speed with which we hold teachers, I think will help in the long run.
Thank you. That's back to Sharon and the first to answer this time will be Jen.
Are we doing enough to prepare students who don't plan to continue their education after high school? And if not, what more can we do?
I think we're getting a lot closer. I think we're moving more and more in that direction all the time. A lot of that, you know, one of the examples of that is the public services work line that was put in last week, the agreement that came out between the city Salina and the fire department and police department. I think that, you know, those things are important. I think that it's important that we engage industry in the area to find out what things we also need to be doing to get better. You know, it stands out to me, talking with one of the business owners here in the town, and you know, he's always trying to hire, and he said, you know, there'd be nothing I'd like better than to be able to see that, you know, this person graduated from Salina South or Salina Central and I know that they've got the skills that I need to bring into my workforce and I can put them to work tomorrow. So I think it's gonna take that community all the way.
Okay. I think the strides we've made in the CTE programs that the district has offered have been huge in regards to that issue. Partnering with local businesses would be a great step. And educating students about what opportunities are there and that after college, or after high school, college is not gonna be your next step. And what programs we currently offer and are offering in the future would help them become more educated and be ready for a job right after high school. Good?
I think it starts at an early age with the counselors. You know, how the counselors engage with the students, get the students, the counselors get to know the students on a level of what they want to do. You know, as far as for the future, what we can do is get up the community, you know, have the students go to a business, follow after the community membership. Thank you.
Thank you. Ramona.
I'll do enough education. We are educating our students on being creative and finding avenues that they may not have even imagined were out there. And so, I say education because in middle school, there's career prison. They are actually identifying opportunities of places where they can receive an incredible career. And so, they're able to look at those and see what it takes to get there. And so, it's not this big, huge, I don't know what I'm gonna do. They have some direction. So we're educating them in how to pursue those things. And so, that in addition to, and that prepares them for the CTE pathways. So now, they have a little more direction than maybe we did when I was younger. And so, we are preparing them and we will just continue to grow as the facilities are growing within our district.
Gary.
School nowadays is so different from what I was in school. Just in the last couple of board meetings I've gone to, just hearing about the CTE programs, pathway programs, that is just, it's awesome. So with these kids who have no idea what they want to do, they can take one or two classes and say, hey, this is what I want to do, this is where I want to go. And then they have the next couple of years lined up. That way, as soon as they graduate, they can go ahead and go into that area and they have a job or they can continue their education. I think a big, big improvement.
I think a big, big improvement.
Mark?
As long as we have even one student who chooses to drop out of high school along the way, we aren't doing enough. I agree with Ed that it needs to start early. Younger, we can catch students. And perhaps even more important than students is catching families to help educate them about the realities of today's world. I don't necessarily care that people go to college, but they have to have training. That's why the partnership with Salina Tech is so vividly important, and I think we need to grow more of those opportunities. My doctoral dissertation is about second-generation male Mexican immigrants and their perceptions about college preparedness. Such young people, I can tell you, don't think they have any chance to go to college. I scam a group real quickly here, and I don't see the Hispanic representation of Salina here today. Those are the folks that are dropping out. We need to do more to educate that part of the population. We need to do more to help all facets of our community and be prepared for their future, whatever that might be. As a director of financial aid, that's my role at Bethany, that educational process extends to how to finance their future as well. Financial literacy is a key thing, and we can certainly help with it.
Gary?
I was thinking about this last night, that, you know, drop out problems and how to get kids to go to school. We have eight or 10 programs in our high schools now that help kids who struggle, PPD, credit recovery, JAG program, Nextel, alternative school, community of schools, literacy coaches. We do a lot. One thing we need, I don't think we should ever give up on any student. And we got these programs, and they're doing great work. People who work in those programs are really good employees who work hard. We shouldn't give up on any student. But at the same time, we need to be realized that not every student is grown up enough at 17 or 18 to handle the rigors and take on the rigors of being a high school student and graduating. We need to make sure we don't forget about them when they're 17, 18, 19 years old. We need to make sure that they're prepared to return to the school and have those kids come back. And we reach back to those kids once they're out in the real world, make them understand what they've missed, so we can catch them on their way. Then, our Salina.
Okay. Emma?
I agree that we have some wonderful programs in the school system already, and we need to maintain and keep those and add life skills so that the students have a wonderful opportunity, whether they want to go on to college or not. I worked 25 years with the medical explorers so that students could select a healthcare career. And it was amazing how many of those switched from being a neurosurgeon to, I want to do political science, I'm not going to be a neurosurgeon. But it was really wonderful to have them have those experiences, met twice a month, and they really learned a lot. I think it's wonderful to expose these young people to the possibilities of careers out there and education, and just how to live life.
Okay. Next question will be for Todd, and the first answer will be Gay.
What is the best thing about Salina USC 305 schools, and what needs to be most improved? I think our people are the best, administration, faculty, and staff, top to bottom, as a product of USC 305 schools. I can tell you, I have a heck of a lot of teachers that care about my success and my future, and I appreciate it that definitely. I think what needs to improve, or what is improving, are the CTE courses and the next step preparedness that we've talked about tonight. We're making huge strides in it. We can continue to make huge strides in it, and there are definitely opportunities for more success there. Good?
When I moved here four years ago from Colby, Kansas, my two kids were asking to come in over Thanksgiving by a teacher on her own. She made us feel so welcome. And one thing that was kind of funny was she looked at my son and said, you know, I don't really like boys. So it did scare him. But, you know, she took that upon herself and made us feel welcome. And I would say that the teachers are the very best thing in the district. I'd say what needs to improve is, I've heard, communication, communication across the board. But as far as teachers, number one, I'd say in Kansas, they're the best. So thank you for that.
Ramona?
I think the best thing is vision, and that kind of goes along with the minds of the teachers. I think that the vision of USC 305 reflects the vision of Salina. The 2014 Bond Project is a positive team, that our school system is paramount. It is number one, it is top priority in this community. And so that vision, that sense of community, that sense of, we want to be the best, that is the best thing that we do here. And what is important in this communication, there've been several times that we have identified in the surveys that there needs to be transparency, there needs to be dialogue between the community and the board and the district. And that shouldn't be, we need to be able to feel like there is a oneness. And so that's the only thing that I think will lead to our success.
Gary?
I think the best thing in Salina would be the teachers. They are great, even though it seems every year my son has a teacher they need, just because that's just how it's going for him. He seems to be jing sometimes. It's nothing that he does, just they put on their opportunities, which is fine. It's just a little joke in my head that he's cursed. The Bond Project, I feel, is the other best thing, with improving our schools, making them bigger, more up-to-date, more up-to-code technology. The least would be, I agree with Ramona and Ed, would be the communication. It needs to be a lot better.
Okay, Mark?
My family and I moved to Salina a bit over four years ago when my youngest son was starting high school. My son wound up graduating last December. He had a 4.0 GPA, been in the Cougar marching band, was a goalkeeper on the soccer team. And through all those experiences, and going back to the passing of the bond issue in 2014, I continue to feel the best thing for our schools is community support. For the most part, our parents are engaged, our teachers care, the support across the board, going back to facilities that Todd asked about earlier, support is a tremendous thing. As far as opportunities for improvement, we've got to communicate, not just internally, but externally. So again, going back to the previous question, so we can keep on having the best possible teachers in our community, we can fill the substitution of teacher problem, communication, and spreading the word about the great things that are going on is our, to me at least, our biggest area for improvement.
Gary?
Since my wife is in the audience, and she's a teacher, I'd better say the best thing is family. I would say that anyway, our family is caring, they're smart, they work hard. I was on the floor for 12 years, and we would pass something that would make extra work for the teachers, they just sucked it up and did it. And I know a lot of them didn't like it. They are dedicated, and they're smart, and we've all got to love them and appreciate the fact that they don't get paid all that much for what they do. As far as what we need to improve on, I think it's parental interaction, it's kind of very similar to the communication issue. Some of our buildings, some of our parents that are great, and there's a huge amount of interaction, and it works great. That needs to be more universal. The more you have parents involved, engaged, the teachers, the schools, and the better that relationship is, the better off everybody's going to be.
Emma?
I agree that the teachers are pivotal points in the education of our children, and leaving that positive educational experience as they can each have. It is very important that the parents and the community or the family unit responds to communications and ask questions and find out what's happening in the school system. It is also real important to be involved, whether in band, or sports, or speech, and theater, or all those activities. It's the parental support and the support of each and every one of us in the community to make our school system very best. We have excellent buildings, we have good things going on right now, but we want to move with that excellent category. So with all of our help and all of our support and the teamwork, it will make a big difference. Thank you.
Jim?
I agree. I think the best thing that we've got in USC 305 is the staff and the administration that supports them and guides that vision that's out there. As far as most improved, I don't know, I hate to say most improved, at least the most improved, but one thing that I always, the vision I have, and that means a lot to me, is how I've seen engagement with students. And I think back to, I was in a school one time, and there was a student who wasn't involved in activities, and a coach sought that student out and said, I need you on my team, I need you to be part of what we're doing here. And I think that that happens for a lot of students, but I would say that would just be wonderful if that happened to every student, and every student had a spot in that school, and they had absolute pride that they were part of everything that went on there and was possible.
Okay. Unfortunately, we don't have time for another question from the media panel, but thank you, Sharon, Todd, and your notches. And thank you for your answers to the questions. And now we'll move to questions from the audience. Which one will take care of it?
We have until seven, sorry. We have until seven, gentlemen, these questions. So we probably had time for four. The first one is, Ed will start. What is your opinion of the Common Core curriculum?
You know, I've heard positives and negatives to the Common Core. I would say that, you know, I am for the Common Core curriculum. Seems like the kids are doing well with it. I guess that's all I'm going to say.
Ramona?
I agree with Common Core, but we need to recognize that Common Core curriculum is the standards that have been set for teachers to operate within. And so with that, their ability and their creativity in accomplishing those standards is within them. It allows them to explore and identify opportunities to the best, share with their students what that topic is, what the subject is, and within the standards. So it's a great opportunity to enhance and keep our students at the level where we want them, which is ever highest possible.
Okay.
I didn't have Common Core back in my day. My older two children, they didn't either, so when my little brother bring homework code, I looked at, what in the world is this? You know, I didn't understand it, I reached out to his teachers, he's in fourth grade now, and it is just, at first, I didn't like it, but now that the older he gets in school, the better. It's getting, the more I'm understanding it with him. Like Ramona said, it is a common standard. It's not going to go anywhere. It's only saying that we are going to have to just keep rolling with it.
Mark?
Common Core is misunderstood, is the bottom line. We talked earlier about communication, and I think we can do a better job educating the community about what it truly is. Well, Ramona provided a great answer to this. Common Core is a set of structural guidelines that the government implements, and we work in the community to help do the best for our students within that framework. I have no problem with the guidelines. It's all about helping young people learn and giving teachers the tools they need to pull those things forward. The school board has opportunity to interact with these things through setting of the budget. And I think as we work with Dr. Hardy and the administration to set the budget each year and pull forth the curriculum that helps us meet Common Core standards, we can continue to do good things. And the education of community members, there are folks out there who don't like Common Core, many may have valid reasons, but I think by and large, there's some misinformation that we can help set the facts correct on.
Gary?
Common Core was initiated quite a few years ago by the Board of Governors across the United States and the National School Administrators Association as a way to kind of create some commonality in what the final goals were, very serious of being a school. And nobody complained about it then. And then when President Obama's administration sort of said, well, we will encourage people to do that, the Department of Education, and they gave some incentive money, and well, some people on the far right then demonized it because Obama had anything to do that was all the politics and terrorism. The question's really kind of outdated now, because Kansas redoes its curriculum every seven years, it's been seven years. So as we speak, Common Core is being replaced by something else. I hope they keep the critical thinking piece of Common Core and a lot of that sort of thing. But we won't add something called Common Core, well, that's something that probably looks a lot like we would call something different. So about in this six months, all that question's going to land.
Kansas, I, people in the back of the building can't hear you, could you speak up into the mic a little better? Oh, is the air conditioning better? Emma?
The Common Core was put together by teachers, and I understand some from even here in this district were involved in formulating the Common Core standards for Kansas. Like with any new program, though, you do need to dive in and see where the progress is, what benefits it's made. And one thing in Kansas, they allowed the teachers to have a little leeway in presenting those Common Core standards to their students, which made it more individualized. So as Gary said, it may be changing here, so we'll have to look at something else and new and different. But for right now, I'm in full support of the Common Core standards, and it is good for our students, and it gives a good basis for our teachers to work from.
Jim?
I think that it's important that there is a standard that's out there. Common Core's the standard that we've got right now, and it's going to be changing. If we don't have a standard, then it's just kind of, we want to come up with a local board, and it just kind of, it doesn't create a unity that's transparent and can be transferable into other areas for students and things like that.
Gay?
Having that common standard, I think, is important for teachers to apply in the classroom, for all the students to work towards. And changes to that process and set a curriculum, I would hope to trust the relationship between the school board and district administration, that if there were changes that we could advocate for, they're at this standard national level, through the Kansas Association, school boards, or through our legislators, that that information would be passed to us and we'd work to make those changes. But it's not all of a sudden that we can make locally.
Ramona will answer this next question first. Do you think a grade school student should advance to junior high school if the student cannot meet grade level standards?
My thoughts are that if we're looking at preparedness, and if we're looking at the best for students, we need to ask ourselves, is that best for the student? Once we become complacent with the standard quo, the status quo, or just moving people through the ranks, if that becomes the way we do business, then that is, then the question needs to come back to each of us, is that the best for our student?
That's a tough one. To me, if a grade school child is not ready to move on to the junior high level, then what is taking place to where that student is not ready? Is it disability? Is it that they're poor? Is it that they're gifted, and they haven't had the opportunity to move forward? Is there something that needs to be communicated on the parent level, just to get them more involved? Because if a child is not ready to move on to grade school to middle school, there's just something that's not balancing out. Is there summer school that they can go to, or any language groups that they can go to, anything like that? That's a very good and tough question.
Try to get closer to the microphone here.
There is no one right answer to this question. It's a student decision between the faculty that are involved both in the last couple of years, and perhaps also depending on the each student's circumstances, who's going to work with them in Lakeview or South. Every student is unique. There are social circumstances, along with the academic factors that need to be considered. We need to rely on our faculty and our administration to make the best possible call for each student, is my opinion on these things. Certainly, there are some cases where the student might need to be retained for another year. That's the best for he or she, but there might also be good reasons to move along. As the school board, I think we need to support the administration, support our teachers, to make the best possible decision, and make sure they have the resources to help in any way they possibly can.
Gary?
Thanks. We've all known that kids mature at different times, different grades. We've all been to a T-ball game when some of the kids were intended playing the game, and other kids were in the outfield chasing back the flies. And that is what that elementary school teacher today must feel like sometimes, with kids at different skill levels and different maturity levels. But some kids do catch But some kids do catch up, a lot of kids do catch up later. They catch up, the time they make an initial, they're caught up. One of the biggest factors in dropout rates is if the kid was held back earlier and flunked third grade or fifth grade or whatever it needed to move up. So I would say at least once, if the kid wants to, if the parent wants to, that we should give them the benefit of the doubt, but at a certain point, if the kid can't keep going on, we need to do something. But it's a difficult question, like everybody said, every case is probably gonna look a little different.
Emma.
I would agree that we need to individualize the case that fits to that student who is unable to progress and to move on to that middle school. It takes the teachers, the parents, everyone involved in that student's life, including the, each student, each teacher, and by evaluating and saying, yes, this would be a benefit to retain him or her at this grade level, or no, like Gary said, let's take a chance, move on, and have a progress, and maybe with their abilities, they will catch up later. But it is a difficult situation to be involved in.
Jim.
This is a very tough question. Ultimately, I think it is a decision that has to be made through facilitation with the staff and the family. This has an individual impact. It's really easy to sit back and say, well, if they didn't eat the mustard for this grade level, English, math, writing skills, but I think our schools are more important than just teaching those things. They're also about teaching social skills and how to go out into the community after school and develop those things. The things that, there's research actually about the harmful effects on those sides of things, the social part of that person can be horrible, that can actually be more detrimental. I think we've got some really good systems in place where it's levels that are passed going forward, IDP programs, things like that, but ultimately, I think that's a decision that's gotta be made between the family and staff. That's not something that's really possible.
Kate.
I think it's a relationship that we have to trust between the parents and the teachers and administration in the building to do what's best for the student. And I would hope that the action can be taken early enough that if, once the crisis come May, that their student wouldn't be moving on to the next grade level, or the school or teacher didn't think it would be appropriate for them to move on to the next grade level.
First of all, I'd have to say, let's see some more parental involvement at parent-teacher conferences. Every time that I go, there's, the showing is very slim. But let's not set the student up for failure. If this is something that we can communicate with the, with the parents, with the teachers, with the administration, let's, I'm all for moving back. Why set him up for failure all the way through life if it's just only back for one year?
Karen, you're first. How do you feel about discipline and consequences for their actions of no respect when they're not following rules and dress codes?
Rules and dress codes.
Well, dress codes, they need to be enforced. Do I believe that girls, for example, should be wearing spaghetti straps and Daisy Duke shorts to school? No, I don't. They should be wearing appropriate items. I agree that gang-related items should be worn in school. I think it's up to the school level to set the standards, also the district level, but at the school level, if a student was to be seen wearing those particular items, they need to be disciplined, saying that you can't wear that, or not necessarily go home and change, but if they've got something else and lost film, they can see that's a reason on. That's just a tough one for me, because because of older kids and younger teens.
Mark.
Just as in society, there's a reason why we have rules, there's a reason why schools have dress codes, and they're there to be enforced. We set those rules for a reason. If faculty or administration have questions about the rules they created, I can see the school board being involved to help interpret those policies, but once the rules are in place, they need to be enforced. I think there needs to be appropriate consequences. We all read in the newspaper and in the press about occasional times where discipline gets a little bit carried away. We need to be reasonable, but we need to help our young people learn what it is to be a contributing member of the community, and knowing how to follow rules is an appropriate part of that. There's also a fair thing to be said about appropriately questioning the rules. I'm all for students coming together in an appropriate way to talk with Mr. Stevens, for example, itself, if there's some question they have, they should be encouraged to come forward appropriately and learn how to question things in the right way. So that's part of the purpose behind rules and the dress codes as well.
Carrie.
I think that some of this relates to the issue we had earlier about how do we attract and take teachers. Teachers get very frustrated when they have rules and there are standards for their classrooms, and they get disrespected, and they send somebody to the office, and there's no consequence. We need to support our teachers on that, and let's have some rules, let's make sure they're the rules we want and that they're really necessary, and then there has to be some consequence and support the teachers in the classroom. As far as dress codes, we need to figure out what's fashion, what's just modern. When I was in sixth and seventh grade in Manhattan, Kansas, we couldn't wear pants with rivets in it because we didn't want people wearing those horrible bleachers. Well, now we know, kids can learn with rivets in their pants. At the alternative school, I think they love just to wear ball caps because kids can learn with ball caps on them. If it's not disruptive in the classroom, let's not have it, but let's make sure if it's disruptive, if it's something that causes a big problem for another kid, you have to concentrate, let's enforce it. But let's figure out what we've got that we really need, and then let's enforce it.
Emma.
I think it's real important, as all of us said up here, what's the number one thing we have to work on, communications. So I think it's vital that the family unit, the parents, understand the dress codes, the rules and regs, and before the student leaves that home, the parents or the family unit can say, whoops, can't have that on today. And so I think it's real, real important that we start with communication, so everybody understands what the dress code is, what the rules and regs are. Hopefully, this would make it a little easier on the teachers in enforcing the rules and regs and the dress code, but I think it's vital to make sure that everybody's communicated with regarding the rules and regs and dress code.
I would agree with that, and I would actually say that communication's not only important, the fact that it needs to be done, sometimes why? At the end of the day, there's a standard there for a reason. I personally believe, you know, in good dress, I think it shows pride in oneself. I think it creates a separate environment. I get dressed differently when I go to work than I do when I go to play. But I think that, you know, some of the standards that are put in place, there's a reason they're put there. And sometimes that communication involves including that reason and being a, you know, bringing that parent maybe in as a partner, and maybe there's underlying circumstances that are creating other barriers, whether it's cultural, financial, there may be other reasons there that need to be investigated. And work with the parents to gain compliance and understand.
Kate.
I have a little brother with Biggers Big Sisters at Coronado, Miss Masterson's class in third grade, and I had the joy of joining their class for lunch this past week. We were not quiet enough when we lined up at the door, so we all got to go back to our desks to try it again. I think discipline and consequences are important to keep order in this school. It's, administration should support our teachers as they go through that process, if it's not something that they can handle in the classroom, and it takes communication between the school and students and parents to make sure everyone's on the same page with that. I think there should be a dress code if the school board is enforcing it. I think we have bigger issues in Salina, so.
Yes, the board has policies and rules in place, that's why we have the students, or some of the students, I don't mean, that's why we have the teachers in place to enforce them. I've come a long way as being married 22 years by all my wife's rules, so I think that that makes it less brutal. You know, as far as dress codes, I think we need to enforce those. There's some times that I see some people, aren't things that I'm being very disappointed in my kids wearing, so yes, thank you.
I like to think that students are mini-mies. They emulate what they see adults do. So many times, we may need to look at ourselves, and yes, it starts in the home, but many times we need to look at ourselves and make sure that we are portraying what we want them to follow. Dress codes are rules. They're given a handbook at the beginning of the year, so everybody kind of has an idea of what's acceptable. Rules are meant to be followed. Discipline is those consequences for either following or not following, which means you have to go back to your seat because you're not quiet. But we need to remember that they're mini-mies.
Mark will answer this first. Do you agree with the recent Supreme Court decision regarding adequacy and equity?
To be honest with you, I'm not familiar with that decision. I need to be candid about that, but in terms of the words adequacy and equity that's in there, I assume it has something to do with equal opportunity for all students, and I certainly support that, wanna make sure that we do everything we can to support students. I apologize for not having enough knowledge about that topic to be a better answer.
Carrie.
Cases, the Gannon case, it was decided then on October 2nd, the Supreme Court came out, and it then made an additional, there's been like four Gannon decisions, and they said, no, it's not adequate, what the legislature did last spring is not enough, and they're gonna have to do somewhere. I talked to Representative Dirks, and she said when they were doing it, they did, it wasn't enough. I think she's here tonight. They did, it wasn't gonna be enough, but they did what they could, which was, thank you, Representative Dirks. It ultimately goes back to the Montoy case, which was the Montoy family from Salina, Reuben and Sue's children, and we won that case, and USD 305 was part of that, and the legislature came back after that and said, okay, we will up the ante on finance over three or four years to make that right. Everybody agreed to it, and the legislature didn't do it. Go back to that time, find the education the way they said they was going to do it with cost of living increases, and we deal with it.
Emma.
I think equity is very, very important, and we have fallen several years behind in the funding, and it's gonna take us a long time to catch up. We do appreciate the funds that were given to us this last year, this year, but we need many more to catch up for all those years that we were deficit lost.
Jim.
Funding is a very, very tough issue, and I've got to be blunt and honest that I don't understand all of it. I do understand that we are in a very, very tough economic situation right now across the state. Not only our state government, locally, businesses are struggling to try to keep people in jobs and to try to keep, you know, everything going. I think we're always gonna want more, we're always gonna want the best, and we've got to continue to strive to always provide the best and get the most that we can, and then do the best with what we have once we've got that.
I think there's always room for improvement. I don't know the magic number of what it takes to educate a student in Salina, Kansas, but I bet these teachers can tell us, and that's why we have excellent people in our district that manage those things. I would take cues from our administration and advocate at the state level for what is necessary for our district, and as they find new ways to educate our students and prepare them for their next step in life, that they would be value to our community and value to those students' lives, finding that funding and advocating for it.
My parents always told me, if you don't know the answer, don't fake it, and I'm going to appreciate Mark's answer, and I'm gonna second that.
Ramona.
First, the cost for educating our students is priceless. You can't put a number on it, however, that being said, the State Board of Education has identified a number. They're the experts. They're the ones that presented that number to the legislation and said, this is what it takes. That number was presented then to the Supreme Court. This is what it takes. And unfortunately, legislation didn't follow through with that. That's the question, and the courts are saying, you didn't get it done. So we've got to bring not just adequacy, but equity there, and that's up to our legislature, so we need to continue to pursue that with them. But as a district, we will be fiduciary and make sure that we take care of the dollar we receive.
Karen.
Funding is something that I really don't understand, but you can't put education, you can't put a monetary limit or value on educating your child. It's never gonna be enough, or never gonna be enough, or it's gonna be too less. That's my answer on that.
This will be a last question, and Gary will start. These five words demonstrate both your character and qualifications for office.
The one native, native of Kansas, native, everybody's from Salina, had two experience, been on the board before, I've had other experiences, free teammate, I'm a good teammate, ask my fellow board members that I serve with. Next listener, I'll listen to people, ask, again, ask my fellow board members, and leader, ask people on the Education Foundation, ask my fellow board members.
I've been in Salina for 50 years. I'm very trustworthy, I enjoy leadership among the people, including myself. I have good communication skills, written, verbal, and non-verbal, and also have a very positive attitude and very dedicated to serve on this board.
Native of Salina, I guess we leave the list. I'm proud to be from Salina. I'm a listener, I like to listen, I wanna understand. I think of Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Time, see first understand, then be understood. I'm positive, amazing. I'm a parent, I'm a parent, I've got students in the school district right now. And fair, I'm not fair, fair's, I know a relative term, but I try to be fair when I look at every situation and make decisions.
I'd say the first two, the other students and the listener, I hope, or I would take a hard look at every issue that's presented to the school board and digest the information presented to us before I made a decision. I'd be an advocate and partner for public education in Salina. I think that can be the biggest change driver in any student's life, they have teachers that are invested in them and people that wanna see them succeed, and I think I'm invested. I chose to move back to Salina after attending college in Manhattan. I've developed a career here, I hope there is a family here, and I wanna see Salina succeed.
Yes.
Five words, leader, listener, I'd never be a stranger, friendly, and approachable.
Ramona.
I like those, but I had written them down, so. Equity, I believe that things should be equal. Integrity, I like to think that people trust. Commitment, even when it gets rough, I don't believe in stopping. Consistency, that's kind of what I do. Try to be consistent in everything I put my hands to. Community, this is home. I believe you get involved at home. I believe you get involved at home.
Karen.
For me, it'd be normal, hardworking, PTA, football, baseball, mother.
Mark.
In this campaign process, I've had a great deal of fun scattering 100 campaign signs around town. As I've been thinking of these five words, I've been thinking about the yards where those 100 signs sit right now. I think if you were to go out and talk to those folks, they would call me caring, collaborative, educated, dedicated, and supportive. And the reason I pull all those together is I am somebody who cares. That's why I've coached 30 some odd youth sports teams over the years, been on the Salina Soccer Club board here in town. Having a doctorate, my wife does as well. Sometimes I felt sorry for my kids having to grow up in a house where their parents are constantly going to school, so a little bit interesting in that way. Dedicated, I've worked in higher education for almost 30 years, all of it at small private colleges as well. And the ebb and flow of budget cycles at those small places have produced dedication. And certainly, my colleagues and coworkers will call me collaborative, so, good question.
That concludes the audience questions. Guy will now moderate the closing remarks.
Okay, thank you very much. Closing remarks, one minute each, and we will start with Emma.
Hi, I'm a candidate for the school board. I've been experienced serving on many organizations and also on the boards at the local, state, and the national level. I understand boardmanship, and I'm ready to serve as a candidate and effective board member in your behalf. And I want you all to remember, learning is for all, no matter what it takes. Thank you, and I appreciate your vote.
Jen.
All right. So I believe that schools are the first community that many children belong to and the one that most of them remember for their lifetime. I believe it's important that every child has a place in their community, in their school community, and that every school community has a place for every child. Additionally, I think that the public school system should prepare our children to strive, survive, and, I'm sorry, strive, thrive, and survive in our communities, or the community that they choose to live in. I feel like we've always done a good job of that in USD 305, and I'd like to continue that leadership moving forward.
First, I'd like to say thanks to the league in the chamber, the meeting members for organizing this event. It's been fun having a conversation about the future of Salina Public Schools. Our next school board will face the task of selecting a permanent superintendent, and that group needs to be ready to set goals and visions with our new leader, and then provide them with the things, both the superintendent and the faculty and staff in the district that they need to execute on those, those goals and ideas. Again, my name's Gabe Grant. I'm excited about Salina Public Schools, and I appreciate your vote on number seven.
You have a tough decision to make and determine who to vote for. You have some great candidates to choose from, but if you want someone that has experience and is in the school district, and someone that has the desire, will, and passion to strengthen the communication and relationships throughout the district, I'm your candidate. I'm very approachable and passionate about the students doing well in the district, as well as being, as well as, as well as them being productive individuals. I want to be available and be an active board member in supporting our teachers, educating our students. I greatly appreciate your vote in USD 305, school board election. Thank you.
Remo.
The fourth word that I mentioned was consistency. I'm starting on the board right now. I believe that the board made a very tough decision at that point when they appointed me to that position, because there were wonderful candidates then as well, but they appointed me. I am appreciative of that confidence, and I believe the consistency is important because we do have some serious decisions to make in the upcoming months and years. I want to be that consistency on the board. Thank you.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Chamber of Commerce, current school board members, current superintendent, and to everyone who came out to this forum this evening. We have a great group of candidates this year. I had an epiphany on the last day of school last year, that this is my next goal in life chapter. So what did I do? I went and filed with the clerk's office. I was the first one to file. My dream is to follow my grandfather's footsteps as he climbed the public school system ladder and made it all the way to superintendent. So please vote for me on November 7th. I care for our kids. Thank you.
Mark.
Thanks so much to each of you for coming up tonight. It's great to have a good crowd. On the other hand, I still wish every seat in this auditorium was full. I wish that we could work together to find ways to get more people interested in voting and participating. I thank all of you guys for running as well. It's neat that the citizens have a choice this time around, and it's a great choice. I know what it takes for me personally. I know what it takes to work well with students, with parents, with teachers, with administrators. I have the education, I have the background, having worked in colleges for 28 years, and again, my wife is in the early 90s, taught USD 305. She currently works for the school district as well. I know what it is to be involved with folks that way. I have the background. I'm also willing to learn. Just a little bit ago, when I said I didn't have the knowledge to ask the question, that doesn't mean I'm not going to go back and research it later. When I don't know something, I'm going to find the answer. I firmly believe in Doughton to help inform the decisions, and I'll appreciate your trust to meet come voting day. Thank you.
Eric.
Thanks. Thanks to the league in the chamber, like David said, this is a great opportunity for us. Now's the time for me to tell you my platform, and I really have struggled to come up with one. I don't think I support one group of children over another one program or that. What I believe in is we have 7,000 children, all coming from different backgrounds, who all have different needs, and we've got to do the best we can for all of them. So yes, I'm for the arts, but yes, I'm for special ed, and yes, I'm for continuing sports activities, but yes, I'm for theater, and yes, I'm for elementary ed, et cetera, et cetera, on down the line. I don't think you can afford to lean one way or another if you're on the school board. You've got to pull for all 7,000. I would like to return to the board to do what I did for 12 years, which was to calmly, steadily provide leadership and a great teammate to work with for the board members. We've had some tough times in the school district, especially at the board superintendent level in the last year, and I would like to see us return to where the school board's stories were not on page one, but on page five or six.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all coming out.